We would call to order the Monday, October 12th, 2015, Manistee Special Meeting to Order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Comments on agenda-related items? Anyone who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? No? Yeah, roll call. Let's do that next. Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Here.
Mayor Potemstead?
Here.
Councilmember Woodland?
Here.
Councilmember Gustin?
Here.
Interim City Manager?
Here.
City Insurance?
Here.
DPD Director?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, now, any public comments? See, now we'll move on to new business. Tonight, we continue our interview for the position of City Manager. The Michigan Municipal League Search Facilitator, Kathy Brinsker, will not be present. Our interim City Manager, Ben, will review the process for City Manager candidate interviews.
Mr. Kayler is sitting in my office. I can go to get him. While I'm doing that, you may wish to review the question order again, but I will do that here.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have a glitch in their copies?
A little bit. Slide B, see?
I'm going to put you in the hot seat there.
Okay.
Would you like to call Fad?
Fad.
It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming in and interviewing with us. We've gone through your resume. Of course, that doesn't give us a complete picture of who you are and all your experiences, so we're going to ask you a set of questions that we've been asking all our candidates. We each are going to take turns asking those questions. But after each one of us gets done asking probably around three to four questions, then I'll give time for each council member to do any follow-up questions they may have on your responses.
Okay.
And then at the end of the interview, you'll have an opportunity to ask us some questions. So we'll get going. If you could, please brief us the summary of your experiences. Tell us why you applied to Manistee and how you think your style and expertise will be the right fit for us.
My experience, I've served local government in Michigan for 38 years, starting in 1977. I've done that professionally, probably about the same number of years on a personal basis serving communities because I've become members of the community. So I have 38 years of variety of professional municipal experience. I was a certified police officer. That's where I started, in local government. And then after that, cross-trained as a firefighter for a city at that time, explored public safety and went with it. So I trained as a firefighter. So I'm a certified firefighter, was a certified police officer. And I worked in my hometown for 11 years at Greenville, went to another community to hit my career goal of being a chief. Served that community for four and a half years, and had the opportunity to go to Alpena as their first and only Public Safety Director. And while I was there, they had a manager that was let go very suddenly and asked if I would consider being the interim manager. And I agreed. And I served for two, well, one year as the interim manager and then went as their permanent manager. The first two years, I served as a dual role of Public Safety Director as well as a City Manager. The only way that was able to occur was we had great staff. After two years, it became obvious to me that I couldn't perform both roles and do a real service to the community. So I relinquished my role as Public Safety Director because we had great people that could follow in my footsteps. We'd trained them and mentored them well, and so that I went on to be the City Manager only. Probably my experiences are that I have a wide range of municipal experience: law enforcement, fire, City Manager. In my current position, I'm also the zoning administrator. I also do code enforcement when our code enforcement officer is not available. I'm the point man for economic development in our community, so I have a varied background in that. I negotiated a number of union contracts to include unions that are eligible for binding arbitration. So I have those different skill sets that I can bring. I think probably the most relevant experience that I can bring to the City of Manistee is my tenure in Alpena. Thought for many, many years that Alpena and Manistee were almost mirror images. They're an older, established community with an industrial base that has had its ups and downs. They have a well-defined, traditional downtown, blue-collar background, harbors, extensive waterfront properties. We have a port. We had a port in Alpena. A lot of similarities in the communities. Done a lot of things in Alpena that will serve me well if I'm chosen for this position.
Thank you. We'd like to get to know a little bit more about you, so can you tell us what you do or occupies your time outside of work?
Well, probably the biggest thing is family. I really appreciate and value family. Where I live right now, I'm about 20 miles from where I grew up. My mother still lives there. My daughter's there with her family, my three grandsons. My brother lives there half of the year. My sister lives outside of that community and have assorted nieces and nephews in that community. And we stay close, we stay in touch, and we do things together. Probably, one of the things I'm most proud about is that my extended family for probably close to the last 20 years have taken a vacation together every year, a week. And I'm just happy to tell everybody that we get there on a Saturday, we like each other, and when we leave, a week later, we still like each other. So extended family is very important to me, as well as my immediate family is very important to me. One of my big passions is waterfall hunting. Got into it late, wish I would've got into it sooner. If you ask my wife, she'd probably say it's a borderline obsession, but I'm going to go with a passion. I do that. I like to be involved in the community. I've been involved in each community that I've worked in. My true passion in community involvement is mentoring youth in Alpena. I served on the board of our Alpena Boys and Girls Club for a number of years. Also, I served on the Board of Directors for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And I also mentored several little brothers through that program. And probably one of my greatest achievements was, I think it was my second match. So we made a real difference in a young man's life, and even after he got out of school and got a job, he would still stay in contact with me and stop and see me. So I really liked that. So, you know, that's another thing that I like doing. You know, I'm involved in a service club right now in the City of Cedar Springs, but I look for opportunities to serve communities where I'm working. Another thing I like to do is just being active outside. Where I live right now, we inherited a home that has, we heat with wood and it's outdoor boiler. So I've become very proficient at cutting, splitting, and stacking wood. My wife and I, my wife has a passion for gardening. Where we were in Alpena, it was more flowers, and this time, we've decided that vegetable gardening is our new passion. And so we're very involved in that, and we have a very large garden that we tend to. And then just being with my family, having them over to work with us, spend time with us. Those are the things. I just like to keep busy. I like to read. I like to play golf. My golf handicap is I golf, but we just have, I have it, have fun, and I enjoy doing that.
When you look back over your resume and over the jobs that you've had, and your career's filled with accomplishments, can you tell us a couple of them that you take the most pride in?
In terms of my personal accomplishments or professional?
Professional.
Professional. Probably one of the things I'm most proud of is something we're involved in right now in the City of Cedar Springs. Just before I got to that community, they got an S-2 grant from the state to take a look at our water infiltration problem. And so as part of that grant, we had to do a project. We're right now in the middle of a $2.5 million project that's going to line a significant amount of our sanitary sewer system. We're tearing up and replacing about six blocks' worth of sanitary as well as storm sewer and water. And what I really am proud of is in our community, we have very few curbs, a lot of rolled curbs. And so I was able to work with the council and make that our new standard. So we're putting curbed streets in areas that weren't serviced before by curbs and as well as expanding the sanitary, or excuse me, the storm sewer in that location. It's been, so far, we're not completed, we're about half to, a little over halfway done. We've seen significant results, positive results. We had, we were treating probably between three and four times the water that we produce. And I've asked, "How is that possible?" And the stock answer is, "Well, we don't call it Cedar Springs for nothing." So we had a significant infiltration process, problem. To start our project, we had to do extensive de-watering because of the water table. We saw an immediate and tremendous reduce, reduction in the amount of product coming into our wastewater treatment plant. The engineers were estimating 50%. Staff is looking at about 30%. So if we were able to do that, we're going to be extremely happy. Evidence of our success just from the de-watering and the lining, we've taken down one of our reactors offline. So we've essentially increased the capacity of our wastewater treatment plant without any work at that plant. So we look at our operations and maintenance expenses going forward are going to be significantly reduced. So that's one of the projects I'm really proud of. Another one was, again, in Cedar Springs, quite current. Out of the blue, one of our council members said, "Hey, let's get rid of our police department." Our police chief was scheduled to retire, and he said, "I've talked to the sheriff and he's interested." Well, in digging into this, I found out this surfaces about every seven to eight years. And it came up, so certainly, we'll take a look at it. They were claiming that maybe we could save $150,000 a year. I was a little bit skeptical of that number. We met with the Kent County Sheriff's Department administrative staff and went through the process, and during our extended meeting with their staff and our police chief and myself, they gathered enough information. They said, "We'd like to have you come back." And we ended up going back, and they said, "At that time, we'll give you the number." So on the ride home, the chief and I, who was retired from the Kent County Sheriff's Department, said, "There's no way we're going to get the number that we need to think seriously." So we went back to the next meeting, and their numbers, they were projecting in excess of $100,000 in savings. So my mindset immediately went from, "I don't think this is going to happen," to, "How am I going to safeguard the employees?" Because the Kent County Sheriff's Department has a, they are a very well-respected, professionally-run department, so I wasn't worried about service delivery as much as I was about our employees. So over a series of discussions with our sheriff, and I give him a lot of credit in wanting to work with the city, he offered to hire all of the full-time officers that wanted to work for his organization. He agreed to put them in a pay rate that gave them an immediate raise, and he would assign all of those that wanted to back to the City of Cedar Springs. And that really got us over the hump to say, "Yeah, I think this is something we can do." Communicated with the officers in our discussions, got them to consensus that, you know, this is not a bad thing at all. You know, the only thing they were going to lose is possibly whatever the seniority got them in our department. So we pulled the trigger on that last November. It's been a seamless, relatively seamless transition. They provide the same level of service that we had. In fact, they provide even a higher level of service. Even though they would assist us when we were a standalone department, now that's theirs also. So they are much more eager to marshal all the various resources into our community that they can. So really proud of how that worked out for our community.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions?
Yes. You have part-time employees?
Correct.
Police department?
Correct.
What happened to those?
They weren't offered positions. They weren't guaranteed employment. They could apply at the Sheriff's Department. We had a number of part-time officers that worked at other agencies. So they might work a shift here and a shift over there. So it wasn't that they were getting a lot of time from us, and some of them were just to the position that it was almost their service to, their service club. You know, they worked because they wanted to work in the city, and we could not accommodate them. We couldn't guarantee them anything because the Sheriff's Department doesn't have part-time employees. But they were allowed to apply for full-time jobs.
You mentioned savings. What was the end result of our savings?
Well, we haven't completed our first year yet. It looks like that we're going to be in the neighborhood of maybe $60,000 to $70,000 a year. One of the things, and that was, you know, combination oversight of myself and finance director, we forgot to calculate payments into the pension program that we have to maintain. We had overlooked that, and that was a mistake, so that eats into it a little bit. But we have minimally the same level of service, and some would argue even better level of service. There's more officers in our community than there were before. They come, other deputies that are assigned to the North End of Kent County will come into our department and do reports there. They move right into our police department. They occupy the same space. So now, it's nothing to see three or four deputies in there because in my experience as a law enforcement officer, if you have one police officer, then you're going to have another one, and pretty soon, the third one shows up, and they're talking shop or they're working on cases, and so we're seeing more officers, deputies in our community than we had in the past.
Do you have a fire department?
We have a paid-on-call fire department. We are extremely fortunate because we have 20 members on our department, probably the best-staffed in terms of numbers in our area. And in my experience in fire service and paid-on calls, it's extremely difficult to get that level of commitment.
Any other questions? Councilmember Cody?
Good afternoon. Or a good evening. I've just got a couple of questions. First one, have you ever been terminated, asked to resign or resigned before termination action? Please tell us about it.
Yes, I have. That was in Alpena, and I was let go on a three-to-two vote. And I'm extremely confident, and if you talk to the people up there, it wasn't professional, it was personal. Didn't want to leave Alpena. In fact, in my career as Public Safety Director, I was young when I got out there. They'd ask me, "What's your next position? Where are you going next?" And my pat answer was, "I'm here until they show me the door." Well, they eventually did. Otherwise, I would still be there. I was very comfortable in that community. It was obviously personally devastating to me and my family. The one silver lining in that whole thing was it reminded the community of Alpena that democracy is a participatory sport. They had lost sight of what their government was doing. So end result was there was questions, "Why?" And they would get answers of, "We want a new vision." The other two council members would turn around and look, point at the wall and said, "I don't see that that's changed." And they would ask again, "A different, we want to go in a different direction. What direction? We'll get back with you." You know, we want, and they gave five to six different responses, never really zeroed in on "why." So there was a community group that formed with the express purpose of recalling those three council members, and it covered the entire community range. We had extremely wealthy people. We had retirees living on very fixed incomes, retired city employees, you name it. It was a very large and very active group. And I was let go in the middle of April, and in November, that group had still stayed together, had worked in the community, and they were successful in recalling two of those council members. The other one, they were unsuccessful. And it wasn't by a slim margin, it was by an overwhelming vote. And, you know, they said, "We lost sight of what our government was doing." And when we asked them to be responsive, they were not responsive. So it started out about me, and then I quickly became a side note to this group of, "Hey, our government is not being accountable to us." And they stayed intact. One of the council members that was recalled at the next council election, at the proverbial 11th hour, he had a friend go in and draw a petition for him and submit it. And it ended up, there were two vacancies with only two people running. The lady that organized the recall committee, she took exception to that. She put herself out as a write-in candidate, and she defeated that previously recalled member, and it wasn't even close. It was five to one, four to one out of write-in, which is virtually unheard of. So the silver lining is, they said, "You know, we don't like what our government's doing. They're not being responsive to us. They're not being accountable." And they became engaged, and they moved forward and acted on their convictions. So to me, that was very personally rewarding. You know, didn't get me where I wanted to be, but such is life.
Okay, on that, what did you learn about yourself and how did it shape your current management style?
Well, what it taught me was I was successful in being a member of the community, not just as a manager, but my work in the community. Because there were people that I didn't know that well that got on board with this group. So it reinforced what I had believed for years is that, you know, you can be involved in a community by getting a paycheck and serving a position, but the real task is getting involved in the community on a different level. So I'm firmly convinced that my outreach in the community in terms of serving in service clubs, serving on boards, serving as a mentor, being involved in the schools, that paid off for that community. So it hasn't changed my, the way I manage currently because what started this off personally was micromanaging by a council member, wanted me to do something for him. And, you know, and we couldn't see eye to eye, and I said, "Well..." He said, "If you're not going to fire this guy, I'm going to fire you, and then I'll fire him." And I said, "Well, if you get two more votes, there you go." Well, he took me up on his offer, on my offer. So, you know, in that respect, I still hold firm to the principles of what my role is as a manager, and I work for the entire council, and I don't work for an individual council member. So that has not changed, even though it came back to, or it did haunt me in Alpena.
Okay, looking at your resume, it says you spent a lot of time in law enforcement. What's the difference between being in law enforcement, what's between, like, between that and being the City Manager?
Just the scope of your responsibilities. That's the big thing. It's all about working with people, but in my role as a Public Safety Director, I wasn't working directly with council. That was probably the biggest change, is working directly with council and being even having to be a little bit more political than I had been in the role as Public Safety Director. So that's probably the biggest difference, and the working with the council and the area of responsibilities that was entrusted to me, that was the biggest thing. I had to learn. I had to work outside my comfort zone. I was very comfortable in law enforcement, very comfortable in the fire service, but some of those strengths that I picked up during that tenure, such as union negotiations, human relations, and the HR functions, and how to work with groups of people. You know, I've always said that police officers are probably the most difficult group for a manager. You think about it. The police chief or Public Safety Directors are telling police officers what to do. And what do they normally do? They tell people what to do. So it's a little tough for them to sit, to accept directions sometimes. So, but it prepared me well for my position as a City Manager.
Okay, if I worked the position in Manistee, how would you try to stay part of the, stay in touch with the community, you know, with the business community and the residents and the community itself?
Well, I envision a couple of different things. What I'm doing, what I did in my current position in Cedar Springs was I went out and met many of the Main Street business owners. I've also singled out four individuals that are very, I don't want to say influential, but they're important members of the community. One is a local minister who happens to be the chair of our planning commission. The other is our school superintendent. Another is a new business owner, a new investor that came to town that's putting up a brewery restaurant of a million dollars or more. And then a downtown business owner that used to be on the DDA. And I try to meet with them minimally once a month and talk to them about, and keep them abreast of what's going on and get feedback from them. So that's one way that I try to engage myself. Go to, I'm involved in a service club, Rotary, right now, which keeps me in touch with the community. So there's a lot of ways that you can do it. And I'm a people person. I don't have a problem going up and down the streets and talking to people and introducing myself. That's a good way to get involved in the community. It was much easier when I had children at home because you had a connection through school, sports, and things like that, so I've had to look at other ways. But what I found success in was getting into the community and working in the community and volunteering and being part of it. Thank you.
Are there any other follow-up questions? I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
You talked about you met with certain individuals. You tried to meet with them once a month. What about other intergovernmental units? Because since you worked closely with the Sheriff's Department in integrating the police department with them, were there standing meetings with other units of government?
Nothing, nothing formal. As an example, the one township supervisor that is actually directly north of the city who we provide fire services for, for a portion of his township, is in our Rotary Club. So I meet with him on a regular, you know, we can talk. You know, because I grew up in that area 20 miles away, you know, I know people. You know, because I grew up in that area, 20 miles away, you know, I know people around there. The current supervisor in Algoma Township is a lady that I first met probably 20 years or 40 years ago, when I was working as a council of youth camp. And she was... her agency was coordinating the delivery of services there. So, I've known her since then and would stay kind of in contact with her. So, it's nothing formal. Probably the most formal is that we have a Parks and Rec Association that involves the four townships that surround us, as well as the city. And those individuals, in my case, the manager or the supervisors, will get together to talk about that. You know, I stop in and see the sole and township supervisor on a regular basis. So, it's nothing formal, it's more informal.
Okay, thank you.
I just... I'm trying to visualize what... You talked about going to businesses and talking with business people about what's going on, what their problems or needs might be.
Right.
That's what I think I heard you say.
Right.
Paint a picture for me. What is that kind of... How do you do? You just do that at the spur of the moment? Did you have a routine?
Well, a lot of times, it'll come up with... Because I'm the zoning administrator. Maybe somebody will call with a question about a sign. You know, "What can I do with a sign?" You know, and what I would normally do at the start, and I still do, is I'll meet with them, whether it's at their business or at my office. Meet with them, get to know them, talk about what issues they're facing, and build a relationship in that fashion. Other times, I've just gone into a store. I am the manager. And have a conversation. Hand out cards. If you've got any concerns, questions, give me a call.
Thank you. In Manistee, we have historic districts, so downtown... Is Cedar Springs considered that?
No. No, we don't have a historic district, no.
Okay. So, zoning, being on the ZBA or CBA administrators, a little bit easier and having to start dealing with it?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we don't have the historic district.
Okay, thank you. My turn. Probably after this question, but I'm going to ask it again. When we call on individuals that you've worked with in the past, what are they going to say about you?
That I've worked with? They're going to say, "I'm ethical. I'm honest. I'm fair. I care about people. I'm approachable, loyal, work hard, communicate well." I think that pretty well sums it up.
Okay. Next question would be, what do you... What does the first three months look like for you in Manistee as a manager? What would that entail?
Be a constant learning process. It would be the start of a learning process. What I envision happening is meetings with council members, meetings with employees. I would want to meet with the council and, "What are your expectations for the city Pick your brains about Manistee's. What are the strengths of Manistee as you see them? What are the weaknesses? What challenges does the community face? Do the same thing with the department heads. It's the way I start any new position. I did that with City of Cedar Springs. Met with the department heads and had lengthy conversations. The council didn't really want to have the real formal one-on-ones. It was more casual. And then get out and just try to start the community outreach. And I would be asking of council members, department heads, "Who do I need to talk to? Who do I need to go reach out to?" Whether it's an individual, whether it's a service club, whether it's this organization. Get out and talk to the store owners. Reach out to the Chamber of Commerce. And always asking, "Who's someone else that I should be talking to?" So, the first three months is going to be a tremendous learning process for me.
What are the most important things you would think you could try to learn? What's the first thing you could try?
First thing I'm going to try to...
Yeah. That you're going to try to wrap yourself around. Who's the first person you're going to meet?
I think I'm going to start with the manager's secretary, right off the gate, go. Because I found out that's probably, you know, that's a very key member of the organization. And probably one of the first that I'd reach out to would be the mayor. Because that's the way I deal with the council, is through the mayor. So, we'd have a conversation, whether it's over lunch, dinner, whatever, and talk about Manistee. You know, what are, again, what are the strengths, weaknesses? What are the issues? Where should I be looking at directing my time and effort? So, I'd be reaching out. Those are probably the first two people I would look to.
My last question. What do you see in Manistee that sets us apart from other places you've worked? What particular skills, talents, or experiences do you have that will make you, your tenure here, successful?
Well, in terms of where I serve now and comparison to Manistee, there's no comparison. Cedar Springs is a much smaller community. The only waterfront we have is a creek. We don't have beaches. We don't have nearly the public space that you have in Manistee. We don't have the breadth of industry that you have. We have industry, but not as large as yours are, and certainly not the diversity that you have. So, it's not really any kind of a comparison. I would say, what I'm going to bring is my experience as in Alpena. And we talked about how I believe they to be mirror images. There's things that I did in Alpena that's going to serve me well. I come with a wealth of experience in human resources, in economic development. That's one of my biggest things right now in our community is economic development. But there's a lot of similarities. I know in Alpena that things that worked there may work here. I know the issues up there are probably very similar to here, you know? I think there's a lot of experiences that I can bring.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions? Did Alpena have a historic district?
We had a couple of historic buildings, but not a designated district.
Okay.
Did Alpena have any tribal interests in the community?
None in the community. The only work that I've done with a tribe was, they were expressing some interest. There was a tribe expressing some interest in establishing a casino in Alpena. And so, we met with them several times, and that was ongoing when I left. And my understanding, it never came to fruition.
Any other questions?
From what you learned about us, what do you think our two biggest challenges will be in the next three years? How will you attack them, and what process will you follow?
What I see is the financial constraints that you have. I've learned that you're levying the maximum millage that you can by charter. You limit it out, and it doesn't give you a lot of options for raising a mill, other than especially voted-in millages. So, that's certainly going to be an issue, is how do we attend to the needs with limited options for raising new revenue? That would be the biggest challenge, I think. Because I see this as an older community with aging infrastructure that needs attention, and unfortunately, not the resources to attend to it. Very similar to what we're facing in Cedar Springs. The other thing I see is, and what I've learned, is that what is Manistee going to look like in the future? What is it going to be? I think you've got challenges in terms of the demographics changing. It's not uncommon for northern communities, their children leave because there's no employment. They're quite often backfilled by retirees. And so, then you get into some issues of what kind of services are wanted, and how can we provide for them, and does that cover the whole spectrum? So, and I think, what is Manistee going to be like going forward? How can we change and adapt in moving forward?
Okay. What is your most difficult ethical challenge you faced in municipal executive?
Well, that would be in Alpena. Go back to that manager that we only had for about six months. Now, the city had acquired a piece of property that was right next door to the public safety facility parking lot. It was an old printing building, and we got it for a song and a dance on tax sale. And we had plans to renovate that for either offices, storage, whatever. And really, nothing had been done. All of a sudden, there was work being done in the interior of the building. And so, we got our... That was back when we... before we were paperless agenda packets. Got our agenda packet. And I noticed in that, in my review on Friday, that there was a memorandum from the city manager to the council saying, "Here's my plan on working on the interior of that building, and with your blessing, I'll get a contractor, and we can get started." Well, the work had already been started. It already selected a contract. So, I knew that was not true. And so, I don't remember what was that, Friday, late afternoon, or it was at the latest Monday morning, I went into the manager, and I said, "I read this memo, and it's not true. Because I've seen the work that you've been doing in there, and you've authorized on behalf of the city with no concurrence from council." I said, "Ethically, that's not right." I said, "I would suggest," or is my suggestion to you, is that you not present that tonight at the council meeting, or withdraw. Just withdraw it. I said, "If you don't, I'm going to go talk to the mayor." And he chose not to withdraw the memo. So, after the meeting, I talked to the mayor. He brought over the mayor pro tem, and I said, "Here's what happened. He lied to you." And I said, "If you want, come down, see me tomorrow. I'll take you into the building, and I'll show you that there is work being done." So, that's probably my... one of the more tougher parts of my job. Because I was out, and I was out on the limb, you know? Could have been terminated, who knows? But just ethically, I could not abide that. And so, I felt I did it correctly by going to the manager, putting on notice that I understood that that was not correct, gave him opportunity to rectify the situation, and told him what I would do if he didn't. And then I followed through on it. So, I felt I was responsible to myself, ethically, and responsible to the community.
Okay. What is the most important skill as a manager can have when it comes to council manager relationship success?
Obviously, communication. You know, I would qualify that by saying it's got to be very open communication. It's got to be very honest communication, and it's got to be very timely communication. That in a nutshell is it for me. I've got to be able to communicate with you openly, honestly, and in a timely fashion. What I've always ascribed to and I tell our staff is that our job as staff is to give the information to council honestly, openly, and timely, so they can make informed decisions. So, that's the way I work with council.
That's my questions.
Any questions? I'd like to go back to your statement on the ethical part when you approached the manager. What position were you... did you hold at that time?
Public Safety Director.
And after having done that, what was your relationship like with the city manager? How did you work through that?
It was icy. But fortunately for me, he didn't stay around much longer. And I think he was in a position that he couldn't get back at me if he really wanted to, because the mayor and the mayor pro tem knew what I had done, why I had done it, and I had acted in the best interest of the community. So, I think he would have... it would have been very difficult for him to come back at me. But I didn't know that at the time when I met, when I talked to him.
Okay, thank you. Any other follow-up?
Just curiosity, did they finish the job with the same contractor?
They did.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. What's the most important role the council plays in the success of a community's future? And what will you do to assure that we are effective in that task?
I think the council has to establish the vision for the community and set a direction. I think that's probably the most important. Second to that is being responsive to the community and listening to the community and using that to help guide your vision of the community. What I and staff would have to do is, if you have a vision, we've got to help you realize that vision. Whether it's just information, research, whatever, we're there to help you reach your vision and support and be supportive of that vision.
Do you find it best to provide your council with recommendations for action, or merely options from which they choose?
I do both. Most of the time, I will say, "Here's the problem. Here are your options," as I see them. And there might be one, two, three, four, depending on the topic. And for the most part, I'll end up with a recommendation. There are times where I don't make a recommendation, because I've not been fully involved in the process. But those that I'm fully engaged and involved in, I'll present options and my recommendations.
Are you more of a manager or a leader? And can you describe how you exemplify the best of that quality?
Well, I'm certainly both. You know, I have to be both. I tend to be more of a leader. It's more difficult in the organization I'm in right now, because I have to do a lot of tasks. It's difficult. But on the bright side, I've learned a lot of things that I didn't know before. So, my trade is to be a leader. I've been a leader throughout my career. You know, probably one of the best examples, when I went to DeWitt Township, I was 33-year-old police chief. And the Michigan Municipal League wanted to start a committee called the Law Enforcement Action Forum, comprised of law enforcement executives throughout central Michigan and down below and lower. And I knew the gentleman that was trying to put this together, and I said, "Hey, we can host it in DeWitt Township." Hosted the meeting and was elected the first chair of the Law Enforcement Action Forum. And they've been going on for a lot of years and developing model policies. And I felt good about that, because we had people from, chiefs from all over the, you know, central Michigan and down to the border, many of which were... had much more time than I did. And they had the confidence in me to lead their committee. So, you know, I like to be a leader. But I understand that in certain roles, I'm going to have to manage people and manage the process. It's just the nature of the beast. But I tend to be a leader.
When hiring a new department director, that's your team, what skills and characteristics would they need to possess, and why?
Well, the first thing for me to get a look would be their technical skill set. Are they... Do they have the technical skills to serve in that position? Certainly, it's, you know, you don't want to spend time trying to hire an engineer that's not an engineer. So, make sure that they have that technical skill set. Then I'm looking at what people's skills they have. You know, try to gauge their ability to communicate, their ethics. How are they going to fit in with our senior department head or department head team? How are they going to fit in? How are they going to fit into the community? So, I try to gauge that. But to start off with the technical skills, then to come into some personal skills of honesty, integrity, community... communications, those types of things, and how are they going to fit?
Okay, you've got a strong background in law enforcement and fire protection.
Right.
Would you be looking to complement your skill set through hiring people or would you be more focused on the individual for a position?
You know, in terms of hiring for your police and fire departments?
No, for any department.
I would certainly leave that up to the department heads to screen. We, as I envisioned it, we would have communication. These are your employees. And I would like to have assay at some point in hiring and just bring it to me for concurrence. And I'll probably just ask a few questions. Thank you.
Any follow up questions?
I have one. It's kinda jumped back a couple. But it's germane to the answer you gave regarding offering options to council and then making recommendations. What if you find that the council disagrees with your recommendation? Where do you find yourself if council is in disagreement with that recommendation?
Well, if the council, as I like to say, bangs a gavel and said, "This is the direction we're going," that's the direction we're going. End of discussion. The decision has been made. It's my position to carry out the direction of council and make sure that our staff does also. If I've had an opportunity to offer my opinion, my recommendations to council, and they disagree, that's their option. But in a day when the council says, "This is where we're going," that's where we're going. And it's happened to me previously. It's happened to me recently. And you can't get tied up in that. Thank you.
I have one. We go back to when we talked about how council plays its success in their community. And your response was council needs to provide direction. Have you ever had a community with a strategic plan? Have you worked with one before?
Yes, yeah. We did that extensively in Alpena. Where I got counsel just recently to buy into having a strategic planning session for Cedar Springs. We'd not had one for several years. So, we've selected April 1st and 2nd that we'll have our strategic planning session.
And going back to the strategic plan then in Alpena, how would you say you were successful in implementing the strategic plan? I know there are long-term goals within those plans.
Right. We had, we had objectives in our plan and staff would report back to council on our progress in meeting those objectives. You know, runs a gamut of, here's an objective, whatever it may be. Counsel, we need funding to move forward on this objective. Are you gonna be supportive of it? This is where we feel we can find the funding. So, we're working, myself, staff would be working with council on moving forward with that.
And here's the strategic plan. You said you had objectives. Did you also make that part of your budgeting process too? Because if you got a goal and you wanna get there, naturally, everything takes funding.
Correct. Yes. In fact, that's, that was my recommendation to council that we have our strategic planning process in the early part of the year. Because we're on the July 1st, June 30th fiscal year. So, we're working, staff is working March, April to put together a draft budget. And that was my recommendation to council. If something comes out of this strategic plan that we know is gonna cost some money, then we have time, staff has time to bring that into the draft budget and make allowances for that and then present it to council.
Wouldn't you wanna find out the direction you wanna go first before you get into your budget? Because you, but the comment you made that you threw your objectives in April and I think what, by May 15th, the budget has to be planned like, now it gives you a couple of days to work out a budget. Takes, takes some time. So, I would think you want your plan and then go into your budget and see what funds you have to proceed.
And that's, we would, we would have our strategic planning done in the first part of April. We may not have the final document in hand, but at the end of that, those sessions of strategic planning, we're gonna know with a great deal of certainty where we're gonna go and what's gonna be their highest priorities and we can start to work that into the budget.
I think you seem, I got the impression that you do the strategic planning first and then into the budget.
Right.
Oh, I'm not thinking of that one. Okay.
Yes, yeah, that.
All right.
Because we were gonna, we start our budget process probably in March, okay? And if in April, when we have our strategic planning, again, as I said, we might not have the final good-looking document, we wouldn't know. And so, staff would have time to amend our draft budget and try to work that in and present it to council in time. I'm sorry if I didn't communicate that correctly.
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Colin.
Any other questions? Councilmember with us?
Welcome, Ted.
Thank you.
From Manistee. Hope you enjoy, you and your wife enjoyed touring the city.
It's always a pleasure. You know, I didn't realize, fully realize until about, maybe a month ago, how much I miss the north. In a span of about a week, I had a long weekend in Charlevoi for a niece's wedding and then the MML conference was in Traverse City. And it just, it just felt right, being up north. It just, it just felt right. And that's the feel I got when I came here, you know? To be able to look at a great lake, to see a river going through town, to see the drawbridges and just the beaches, the parks, the walkways. It just feels home.
In Alpena, did you, before I get to my questions, I just wanna ask you. And there's no meaning or relevance with this, but do you have lower lake or traffic in Alpena? Because you had, you have commercial port.
Right. We, yeah, we had, most of our lake traffic, commercial lake traffic was at, was going into, yeah, Lafarge, our cement, the cement plant. A lot of that of products. We also had coal delivery on a river. And we also, so they supplied, the ships would bring in the coal for the ABTCO. It was a wood panel plant. And then, that was on one side of the river. On the other side of the river was a stockpile for salt. So, we had traffic in and out. We had some commercial traffic, other commercial traffic. In Alpena, they have, they have the only freshwater underwater sanctuary in the NOAA inventory. So, they are now offering glass-bottom boat tours, which so that increases our commercial traffic on our waterfront along that river.
So, similar to Manistee, very similar?
Similar. I don't believe that Alpena would have the same frequency of ship traffic as Manistee.
We get probably about 20 to 30 lower lakers coming in a year, so.
Not quite that many in Alpena.
And no drawbridges or anything?
Yes. We have, we have a bridge, drawbridge. And really, we worked out a nice arrangement with NOAA. They were our backup for operating the bridge. If we didn't have someone from DPW available, NOAA's employees would come and do the bridge for us. Because they had a vested interest. They were on the other side of the downside of the bridge. So, it was a good partnership for us.
Of course, the Cedar Springs, you're kinda landlocked.
Yes, we are landlocked.
You have a freeway, but.
We, and that's just outside the city.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, thank you. I just have three questions for you. First, getting to a collaborative agreement on contentious issues is always difficult. Some municipalities face tough financial choices. Others struggle with residents, resident disagreements over a plan for the future. Walk us through a time when you faced particularly divisive problem and tell us, tell us the process you used to get to, get the parties to say yes.
Well, two things. First of all, what you described is, to me, union negotiations. And I've negotiated a lot of contracts with police and fire. And it was especially difficult in the economic downturn. They still had their wishes for more pay, better benefits. The only thing I was able to do or could offer would be information on this is our financial situation. This is, what we have is not sustainable and try to work with them to get that, gain that understanding. And a lot of it came, came to pass was the relationships I'd established with those, within those two departments. And that's how we were able to come to consensus is, you know, the relationships I'd established, the presentation of information and was able to get them to understand and agree and come to consensus that, yeah, we couldn't do those things. And I consider it successful in the fact that both agencies could go to binding arbitration and they didn't. So, we reached consensus. In other situations, when I came to Cedar Springs, they had just had a major dust-up with the red flannel festival over the logo. And so, the city was threatened with a lawsuit if we continued to use the red flannels, which they had used forever. And the city was going through financial hardships, had laid off people, had started to use their fund balance. And they said, "Even though we think we have a very good legal standing, we can't commit city resources to defend ourselves when we've laid off people and reduced services." So, they said, "Okay." So, when I got there, we had no logo, nothing. So, I offered to council that what I would like to do was to put together a community group to come up with a new logo. Involve the schools, we involve the DDA, we involve the Chamber of Commerce and several citizens at large to sit down and figure out a new logo for the city. So, they came with different ideas. And we talked about how are we gonna make this work? And we said, "We'd have to reach out to the community to find out what's gonna be our new logo, get them involved." And so, we had open invitations. Send us your ideas for a new logo. And so, we got a number of those. We worked through those. We came up with a couple of options for council to consider. And over a many-month period, we came up with a new logo for the city. And it was because we reached out to the community and we got the consensus that this is what we want it to be for our logo.
What did you come up with?
We came up with something along the same lines of what we had. We had, they had red flannels hanging from a pole or rod. So, we didn't wanna, we still wanted to respect the heritage of the community. So, we basically worked with an artist and used one of our historic downtown light poles as the mainstay with a pole or rod coming out of it with the State of Michigan in red, which was, you know, key to the community, hanging from that light post and with a star where Cedar Springs is. And so, and again, it was, it was an accepted fact that if at some point the community got back together, it was gonna be really easy to take that State of Michigan and turn it into a pair of red flannels. So, that, that went through. That's what we have for right now.
Just a quick follow-up. On the union contract you said with police and fire, that was in Alpena?
Yes. Yeah, I wasn't, again, in Cedar Springs, we have paid on call, so we have no contract with them. And before, well, in fact, the, the union, police union contract expired while we were in negotiations and discussions with the Kent County Sheriff's Department about taking over our operations. So, I was able to work with our union and say, you know, "Let's put this in abeyance until we get this all sorted out." And they were comfortable with that.
Now, in Alpena, did you, was the DPW union?
Yes. DPW was a steel case unit, or steel, steel case, being in Grand Rapids. Steel workers, sorry, as well as our clerical unit. And then, we had, police had two unions, one command, one patrol, and then fire was all one.
Thank you. Another question for you, Ted. Every Michigan community has faced severe financial difficulties over the last decade. When you look at our budget and the forecast, sorry, jump questions, so please forgive me. Looking back over your career so far, what do you see as the most creative and innovative project or program you were involved with? Tell us about it.
Probably the one that I think fits this bill is, in Alpena, we were struggling financially. And, you know, I was looking at having to lay off people. At the time, I wasn't overly impressed with our IT department, which was one person. So, I reached out to the county to see if there was any interest in combining our IT departments. And there was. So, we ended up working with the county to provide IT services for both entities of government. It resulted in a lot of wins for both. New revenue stream for the county. We had redundancy in terms of backups and servers and we had that. The county was very proficient at running wires and cables and they did a lot of that work that we would have contracted out. We allowed them to put, because of what we were paying, they would be able to put on a part-time person to really maximize. So, we became very comfortable in working together. And as an outgrowth of that, then we started the city and county jointly installing fiber and around the community. And our goal was to ring the community and then lease space on our fiber as a new revenue source, a new revenue stream. Just recently found out, one of the, one of the projects that we had in the works when I left was to run it from the courthouse in downtown Alpena out to the airport, which is about a five-mile run. And we'd identified governmental agencies along that line that we reached out to and they expressed interest in getting, becoming involved as part of our fiber network for a couple of reasons. It was cost-effective and it was a better bandwidth. So, I just happened to see that Alpena was working towards that. But, so I think that was, that was pretty innovative for our community. You know, there's a lot of examples of combining services amongst units of government, but we took it to a little bit different level in talking about providing fiber to the community for a new revenue stream and to benefit the community.
Thank you. Last question, and I'll start with that again. Every Michigan community has faced severe financial difficulties over the last decade. When you look at our budget and forecast into the next couple of years, what do you see and what are you bringing to the table that will help us meet and manage our financial challenges?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, from what I've learned, your options for new revenue sources in terms of the millage is limited. So, that's gonna be difficult to come up with some new funds. So, you gotta look at new revenue streams. Try to see what revenue streams might be out there. We had, I've had to do that in Alpena and I've had to do that in Cedar Springs, is look for new revenue streams. And some of it was, you know, pretty, you know, relatively easy to do. As an example, in. As an example, in Cedar Springs, you know, we had an unfunded pension liability, we didn't have a lot of money to work towards that. They had a local development financing association and authority, excuse me, and they had, it just languished there, collecting taxes in a TIF. And they had not done anything with it. So, I mean, you just look at efficiencies, we were able to disband that LDFA and reimburse the different units of government that money that we'd been, we had been holding. And that meant over $175,000 to our community. And I was able to get the council to dedicate that to our unfunded pension liability. So we cut that by more than half. So you just take a look at what efficiencies you might be able to realize in your budget. You know, in Alpena, the only way that we were able to balance budget was unfortunately through some layoffs. We had to look at that, and that was not an easy decision to make. And I was the first, and I've been told the only city manager that had to lay off personnel. So, and I see that your options for increased revenue, or revenue through the traditional means of raising millages is very, very limited. And so then you have to look at, continually look at efficiencies or other revenue streams that you may be able to generate.
Any follow-up questions? That's my question.
You've answered a few of my questions already, so I'm going to kind of mess around here. Manastee, and the city manager functions as a human resources director, which I think you have done in the past. What is the most important long-lasting initiative you've developed regarding employee growth and development? And tell us what measures you use to judge that success?
I think, Brian, and it's really a simple thing. When I got to Alpena, they didn't have a process for training their police officers. So we immediately started a field training officer program. I mean, a simple thing that they had not done. So we were able to put our new hires through that process and to make sure that they were going to succeed in our organization and then that when they came out of that, they were going to be the types of officers that our community needed. I mean, a simple thing like that. I've, throughout my career, you know, I've always emphasized training and employee development. And a lot of it was because when I started out, we didn't get a lot of training and we didn't get a lot of personal development. So it was one of the things that I always said, if I ever could influence that, I'm going to make sure that we have trained up people, that we mentor them. So as an example, our deputy police chief, I sent him to the FBI Academy. We made, we went to our employees, where do you feel you're lacking in terms of the ability to do your job? And we addressed those as best we can. In Cedar Springs, we have a relatively new finance director. She came from the private sector. And so there's, we, there's a three-year program for municipal finance directors, a week at a time each year. So we got her right into that. You know, I mandated that she attended, attend our county finance director meetings to get out there and network and learn. So I look for some input from the employees, where do they, where do they think they need assistance and training to do their job efficiently? And we try to make that work as best as our budget can allow.
Economic development and redevelopment can take many forms. Tell us about your experience in the field of economic development and growth, and more importantly, what philosophy and approach would you suggest for Manastee?
In Cedar Springs, we are a small organization. We don't have a staff person that's involved in, dedicated to economic development, other than it's another hat I wear. We have an economic development agency that services Kent County and a couple of other counties. It's called The Right Place. So we don't, as a, as an organization, we don't go out looking. People, opportunities come our way. And, you know, two things that, that I tell myself and tell my staff is, we can't screw it up when we do have an opportunity. And then the other one is, how can we make it happen? And that's what I tell my staff, how can we make these opportunities happen? And we've, we've had some good success in making things happen. We have a retirement community coming to town that we helped, that we directed them to some property that fit their needs. We lined them up with the school because there was a, it was a 20-to-40-foot easement adjacent to that property. They were, wanted to know who to contact and how to go about maybe purchasing that. So I talked with the schools to make that connection. We have another retirement community living coming to town. They're both assisted living and independent living. We, again, we had a company come to town that we had a Wolverine World, we do have a Wolverine Worldwide Distribution Center that employs 75 people. They were going to, corporate-wise, they were going to realign that and they were going to close that down. There's a lot of jobs to lose. I mean, nothing that our community did, but a company in Grand Rapids was looking to grow, and they bought the building. They're going to bring 300 people to town, 300 jobs to town. What we did was, there was a development agreement that covered that property, that we had to quickly, within two months, get that development agreement assigned to the new owners. And there was what we called, in the agreement, a city strip that they wanted, they wanted, you know, was part of the development agreement for a dollar from the city. We made sure that had happened. And then there was an option for another four acres of city property that was just across an unimproved road, that that option had expired. So within two months, we were able to tweak up that agreement and we were able to bring it back to council to bring back that option for those additional four acres of property. And that was all done within a couple of months. Now, since then, they've purchased that city strip for a buck, that four acres that they wanted to purchase has grown to 6.4. And they've got that for future expansion. And they're going to put on new offices outside that structure. So in terms of economic development, we make, we make those things happen to the best of our ability. We try not to mess it up. And in this particular example, they're going to bring in 300 jobs, they're going to probably double, if not triple, the number of passenger vehicles down a particular roadway and probably double the amount of semis down that roadway. And it, and it's, it has some, probably more residential than otherwise. So the owner, who was just a wonderful man, was very concerned, as I was, about the impact on that roadway and that section of the community. And we had, long story short, the city had all, forever, wanted to extend that road further south and take the utilities down there. So I initiated a meeting with The Right Place Economic Development Corporation for us, MEDC, MDOT, the County Road Commission, the West Michigan Regional Planning Agency. And we got around a table in the new owner's facility and said, how can we make this happen? What are you going to bring to the table? And so we've taken that one step farther and we've done an initial preliminary grant with the EDA. It was voted out of our region to go into further consideration for a $3.2 million grant to extend that roadway down and extend utilities down there. Now, you know, here, you know, the way I looked at it, we had a challenge, but it presented us an opportunity because all of that land that we're going to put the road through is about, almost 55 acres of city property, it was former sewer lagoons. They've always wanted to develop that. This company, this opportunity, is wonderful for the city and the fact that we're going to get, you know, almost triple the jobs that we had, and more than triple the jobs. And we have an opportunity to open up those up to 55 acres of industrial property for future development. And especially when they exercised that final option for what turned out to be 6.4 acres, now we can go to the EDA and say, it's not in hopes, it's we have a parcel that we can't adequately service now. We need this help. So it's provided some opportunities, was even able to get the owner on board with the idea of contributing something. As with anything like that, we just have to decide what that something is and how much money it is. But I don't think that's going to be a big issue. So that's what I've been doing in terms of economic development, is when the opportunities come to us, don't mess it up. And how can we make it happen? And what resources can we bring to bear on it?
Have you worked specifically in Alpena with like an economic development corporation or?
In Alpena, they had what they called Target Alpena, and it was funded, the city, I think they contributed about $40,000 a year to it. It was always a, and the issue to get the county to throw some money at it, and we were trying to get the private sector to it. But anyhow, they had a gentleman that worked on economic development on behalf of the city. And then again, the same thing is that we would work with that individual on how we're going to make it happen.
Thank you. Last question I have for you is, tell us a little bit about your comfort level with technology, primarily how you see it and use it effectively for presentations, communication, citizen engagement.
Well, the way we engage or try to engage our citizens, our community, is through our website. They used to have a Facebook presence. However, in staff reductions, we just don't have the resources to dedicate to Facebook because you have to be, you have to be current. And we just don't have an individual that has that time to be current. So we use our website. We do it with emails. It's unfortunate that, and I don't think Cedar Springs is unique, but it's been very, very hard to engage our community. I got a lot of information out through the media, through the website. We even put flyers in with our tax bill saying, we want to start an email list of individuals so we can give out updates, alerts, whatever. We got 25 people respond. So it's been very tough to engage with them. In terms of how do we use technology, we were able to finally get some money budgeted for Munitrex. If you're familiar with that, it's a, it's a program that collects data from other communities and you can benchmark yourself against other communities of similar sizes or even dissimilar sizes on a lot of different data points. So we're just starting to get very comfortable with that. We use Roadsoft software to work with our Paser information, so it gives us a direction on what we want to do, what we want to do with the very little money we have for roads. So, and that. In terms of my uses for presentation, I'm not, I know about it, I know how it works, I don't use it, unfortunately. And I don't, given the council that we have, I think the way we're doing it is probably the best way to do it.
Any follow-up questions?
I have, Sad, I have a follow-up to my last question about the financial difficulties that the community faces or Manastee faces. In your, two other, Cedar Springs now and Alpena, Manastee faces issues with our streets. Can you tell us about, did you have special funding for streets or how did you attack that?
No, neither community did we have special funding. What we've done, we did in Alpena, what we did in Cedar Springs with this recent project is we tried to match our water sewer needs with bad roads or vice versa, so we can maximize them. Because if you're tearing up the road to work on water and sewer, then the water and sewer funds can pay for the road, you know, to a certain degree. So we tried to do that as best to maximize them. In our community, we have a couple of council members that are very interested in a special millage for roads. So we're getting, staff is working on getting the information along with our contract engineer of, if you want to do this, you know, what are we, what are our needs and really quantify those. And then if they want to move forward with it, what I found out to be successful on passing a millage is, you have to let the county or the community know what they're going to get and what they're going to get and when they're going to get it. In Alpena, again, I wasn't the manager then, I was a public safety director, but their goal was to have sidewalks all over the city. And it was a multi-year plan and it was a cost share with the homeowners. So some people had to swallow hard and say, I'm not going to get this tomorrow, might not get it next year, but I see I'm on year three of this plan. And that made it a little easier. I mean, we still had some homeowners that say, I don't want sidewalk, I don't need sidewalk, and I most importantly, don't want to pay for it. But they, the council was committed to that vision and they, and they got it through. But I think, but I'm convinced that one of the reasons they were successful in that is because they communicated to the, to the community that this is a multi-year plan, we not, might not do yours this year, but you might, you're going to be here somewheres. And they followed through on the, on the plan.
And my last follow-up question, Manastee has a fiber township to our south and to our north, Manastee Township. Have you had experience working with the townships, making a win-win for all parties?
Yeah, just a recent example is, we're undertaking a fire study with our neighboring township, Solon Township. And we cooperated on the cost of a consultant to come in and study our operations, to see what options we have for efficiencies. We don't know what, we're going to have a report by the end of the year, but we were able to work together and, and I was able to get our council to dedicate monies, the township supervisor was able to get his board to dedicate money, and get on board with the concept of, let's study and see what we can do if there is anything to do, and then agreed to work towards the recommendations. So I've done that in Alpena. We had a, an agreement to provide water and sewer services to Alpena Township. It was on a 30-year master agreement. So we had those relationships. We worked with them on other projects, a lot, a lot of cooperative ventures such as fire, you know, and how we work together. So I have experience working with other units of government. A unique situation in Alpena, they started an intergovernmental committee because it was at one point, and again, I wasn't the manager when this happened, but you couldn't, if you had members of the city council and members of the Alpena Township Board of Trustees, and I wasn't at these meetings, but they would turn their chairs and face away. And this, started this intergovernmental committee, bringing in all units of government in the county and meet quarterly. And then that's, that caught hold and, you know, they had different subcommittees, they had a recycling, they had an air one, and different things that we could work together cooperatively. And so that became the norm, that we worked wherever we could in unison.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Not only does our next manager have to be a good fit for our community, we want the community to be a good fit for our manager. Is there anything you need to know about our community to make, to help you make that decision whether we're a good fit for you?
While I appreciate the offer, no, there's nothing I need right now. I came in with an understanding of Manastee. And again, when I was in Alpena, when I would come here, I mean, these are like mirror images. And we, my wife and I like being on a great lake. We like water. We like, you know, the, being able to go down to the waterfront. We like, you know, the, the, being able to go to, go down to the waterfront, being able to walk in a community, bicycle, and those types of things. And we like the traditional downtown. It's a good fit with us. I, you know, before I ever applied, I asked my wife, is this an option? Yes, it was. And in fact, she's here with me today. And so we, I believe, and so does she, that, that Manastee is a good fit for us. And I think I'm a good fit for Manastee.
Okay. And do you have any other questions for us?
No, I just want to say, you know, apologize for not applying sooner. I don't know how I missed this opportunity until just recently. I normally check, because I, I just like to know, you know, who's moving and what's an option, and, and I'm not a, an individual that would just leave to leave, but it had to be the right opportunity. And when I found out you were this far into the process, I thought, oh, man, you know? So I just want to apologize. If I would have seen it right at the start, I would have applied right at the start. So it's not a situation that, you know, I'm a Johnny come lately, it's just that I didn't see the opportunity, and when I did, I immediately applied.
Are there any other questions? I guess there is one question that I have. You've had a long career, and as you said, you're looking for the right opportunity. If this is the right opportunity and you were offered the job, what is your commitment in a perfect world?
I'm in no rush to retire. You know, I've, I've always thought that I would work at least age 65, you know, if my health holds up, and I'm not, kind of what I've been, quite healthy. I'm in no, I'm in no rush to retire, as long as I'm in a situation where I'm comfortable, or productive, or appreciative, there's no rush to go.
Any more questions? Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.